I'll give a brief introduction on four points of order. The rules, the articles, debate and voting. And then we'll proceed. The rules. Robert's Rules of Order are the basic rules of order for this meeting, except where Vermont's state law takes precedence. You, members of the Assembly, cannot change Vermont law, but by unanimous consent or by a two-thirds vote, you can change Robert's Rules. You have the right to challenge the rulings made by the moderator. Please tell me if you think that I have ruled improperly. My job is to facilitate the will of the voters. Point two, the articles. An article must be moved and seconded, then stated by the moderator before it is under consideration and debate may begin. An article may have only one amendment at a time associated with it. And likewise, that amendment may have only one amendment at a time associated with it. We'll keep track of that as we go. With respect to an article, an amendment may not change its subject or its objective or the means of achieving the objective. Point three, debate. All motions, remarks and discussion must be addressed to the moderator. I will do my best to recognize you in the order that you raised your hands. After being recognized, please stand up and state your name. We need this information for the minutes. If there's no objection, I see a hand raised and I will take that question after reading the introduction. After being recognized, please stand and state your name. We need this information for the minutes. If there's no objection, speeches will be limited to two minutes. However, speakers can ask for permission from the Assembly to speak longer. Your speeches must be confined to the merits of the question. You may not engage in personal attacks on a member of the Assembly or their motives. After you've spoken once on an issue, you may not speak on it a second time until every other member of the Assembly has had an opportunity to speak on it once. You may be allowed to speak a third time by unanimous consent or a two-thirds vote. Debate may be cut off by a motion to call the question with a second of that motion and then a two-thirds vote. But you must be recognized to make this motion. In other words, you can't just yell out, "Call the question." Four, point number four, voting. A vote by division of the House may be called by one voter after a voice vote. A vote by paper ballot may be called by seven voters after a voice vote or after a vote by division of the House. Any vote that is counted will be counted by tellers. In this case, including the town clerk, justices of the peace and members of the Board of Civil Authority. Tellers will count the votes and prepare a report which the town clerk will announce and present to the moderator who will declare the results of the vote. Reconsideration of an article is permitted until the point at which the Assembly begins consideration of another article. A motion for reconsideration must be made by a member who voted with the prevailing side. So yes, I will need to ask you how you voted. At this time, I ask those who are not registered voters in the town of Woodbury, please raise your hands. The meeting was warned to begin at 10 o'clock. So we began a few minutes after 10. I see no hands raised, so... Just getting on the point of registered voters in the town of Woodbury.
We still have a lot of people waiting to check in because we are...
Okay. By unanimous consent, if there's no objection, we will wait to allow the people that are lined up on the stairs to check in and join the meeting. I hear no objection. So yes, we will take a short recess and allow the voters on the stairs to check in and join the meeting. Okay, folks, we'll bring the meeting back to order. For any folks who have arrived recently, I need to ask if there are any non-registered voters in the town of Woodbury here. Okay. Anne? Okay, thank you, thank you. And if there... I'll just repeat briefly. If there are any questions about information, those may be asked as requests for information. You may challenge the rulings of the moderator. And if you have a point of order about the procedure, you may raise a point of order. Or if you have a question about procedure, you may raise a question, a parliamentary question. We call it procedural question. So... With that said... Okay, we will begin. So we have two articles on the agenda. One main article and the second would be to adjourn. So Article One. Shall the town appropriate up to $85,000 to the Woodbury Volunteer Fire Department, Inc., for the purpose of financing the cost for construction of a new fire and emergency operations center at a total cost of $1,300,000? What is your pleasure with respect to Article One? I see a gentleman here. I recognize you. Monty Shatney. Okay, we have... We have a request for information. Is there someone that could answer that? Yes, please identify yourself and...
Chance Payette. I'm the president and assistant chief of the fire department. That amount will be recurring for 20 years on my construction loan. So I mean, $5,000 per year for 20 years.
For one year.
Right.
Yes, I recognize.
Diana, please, do you want me to move the question before I move the article, before we start the question?
Okay, so, okay.
So I moved it, the article will be approved.
Okay. We have a motion made by Diana to move Article One. Is there a second? I recognize Sarah. Will you please stand and state your name? Sarah Van Hoff, seconds. Okay. So we have a motion made by Diana Peduzzi, seconded by Sarah Van Hoff, to move Article One. I'll restate it. Shall the town appropriate up to $85,000 to the Woodbury Volunteer Fire Department, Inc., for the purpose of financing the cost for construction of a new fire and emergency operations center at a total cost of $1,300,000? Is there any debate? Okay, yes, I recognize you. Please stand and state your name.
My name's Heather Winkler.
Heather Winkler.
Okay, so we're voting. We spent $85,000 this year. Do we have to vote again next year? Number one. Number two, if the building program starts and we vote it down next year, what happens? Is that my question?
I recognize Chance Payette.
Thank you. So yes, the answer is it will have to be voted on every single year. We cannot commit as a voluntary fire department. We're not hard to dispossess. We've been committed to the whole amount that we deal with on a year-to-year basis. We can't protect all. If we start the project and vote it through down next year, then we will not have $85,000 to make a payment. So if we come up with a project, it will be rebuilt by the bank. It's like everything else. If nobody wants to pay for it, we don't pay for it. So we continue to date. Do you notice that? Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
I recognize you. Please stand and state your name.
I was just wondering why up to $85,000. I was just asking, not clear. When you say up to $85,000, what does that mean?
Oh, please raise your... Recognize...
I'll just keep it up in the air for them.
Chance has spoken without objection. You can speak again unless someone would like to speak now.
Would it be easier for us if we came up in the front so people don't have to be very crowded?
You could do that, yes. Now just remind everyone, we've got some noise up here, so... When called to speak, please rise and speak loudly. So Chance, you are recognized to speak.
So the question was, why does it say up to $85,000? Because the $1.3 million that we're looking for will be affected by the interest rate at the time. Because we get the $1.3 as a construction loan from the bank and then once it's completed, it gets sold off into the bond market. At that point in time, depending on what the interest rate is, would determine what our yearly payment is. It was at the low point two years ago around $81,000. It's closer to the 85 now. That's why we put up to $85,000 to allow that fluctuation from year to year. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I see a hand raised in the back. Yes, I recognize you. Please stand and state your name.
Jim Smith. So say that this property today and next year, five years down the road it doesn't. The bank repossesses it. They... What happens if they... Where do they put a lien on? A lien hold on for firearms? Where do they put the lien on? Fire trucks? The firehouses? You guys still old?
Yes, the lien from the bank.
Okay, we'll do it. We can move back and forth like this without objection. We'll make it efficient without objection. Chance will answer, yeah?
I'm not very good with raising my hand, sorry.
All right, I'll look over that. I'll look over.
Well, the answer is they put a lien on that building. What else? I mean, is it going to be something else? Why would there be something else?
Excuse me, just allow Chance to answer. If you want to follow up, you can raise your hand. We'll keep it orderly.
We're asking for a loan for a piece of property. Their lien would be on that piece of property. If we don't pay for that piece of property, they would take such a piece of property. Just like if I didn't pay for my car loan, they would take my car. They wouldn't take my car and my house and my pool and Chuck's car. They'd take my car. Paul said he wants my car.
I recognize this woman in the back. Please state your name. Anne Marie Joaquin. The question was, if I heard it correctly, are you implying that the property is worth $1.3 million?
Right, and that they take a long lien on that property.
Without objection, Chance?
Yes, the property would be worth $1.3 million. That's what the immediate probable cost was reached up to. The destruction cost, sorry.
I first see a gentleman with his hand raised. Yes? Would you like to speak? Oh, pardon me. I recognize... Okay. I believe Anne Marie had her hand up first. Without objection, she could speak again.
So just in theory, because if I can get a long lien on the law, at the present time, I know that the property is worth a certain value to get that loan. You're saying in answer to this gentleman's question that the $1.3 million would be, the only lien on it would be the property. And in order for that to happen, that piece of land in the center of Woodbury needs to be worth $1.3 million before you get the loan, is that correct?
Okay, without objection, Paul Surudi.
So that the property is worth about $100,000, which was donated to us. The anticipated loan would be based on the value of the construction of the commercial property that we would be building. That's how they do this type of loan. So we've already dealt with the banks. They're okay with that. Did that help out?
Yes.
Thank you.
I recognize this gentleman. Please state your name.
Peter Pelz. It's my understanding that Callis has offered to pay 30% of this project. The fire department does not want to accept that money for reasons I'm not clear of. But I think this is a significant issue in regards to relieving some of the tax burden on Woodbury. And it will very much affect Callis' loan. Thank you.
Can you repeat Peter's remarks? Okay, Peter?
The town of Callis has offered to pay 30% of the cost of this project. The fire department does not want to accept that money. My question is why? Because that would be a substantial relief with the woodbury tax burden if that's 30% to pay by Callis. I'm asking why is this...
Any other debate? Okay. I recognize a gentleman in the back. Please state your name. I'm sorry?
Point of order.
Okay.
The question hasn't been responded to yet.
Okay, there was a question. Okay. Okay. I will pause. I will recognize you next and we'll answer this question to inform the debate going ahead. So if there's no objection, Chance will answer the question that Peter asked. Thank you.
So for starters, not to be argumentative, but we've never been offered 30% of this cost by the town of Callis. So we have not received that offer, first. Second, the reason why we went with Woodbury is this is a Woodbury property which Woodbury, the town of Woodbury, would inherit if something were to happen to the fire department. And three, we've watched the last few 10, 12 years of this same process going on in Eastmont Pillar. And the amount of meetings for the select boards and the fire departments and both towns is tremendous. I'm not saying we're not going to charge down the road for this building. What I'm saying is if Callis backed out of their contract in five years, the town of Woodbury would have to pay for the full amount. It's easier today to ask you for the full amount and deal with this moving forward. But we have not received an offer of 30%.
Okay, I recognize a gentleman in the back. Yes. Please state your name.
My name's Galison.
Lady Galison.
My start off is I've been here 60 years. There's 50% of 60% of the people in this room, like I'm working on. If you're going to find that, it's for 20 years. I think you'll find at the end of that fine, they go last three or four years of that. No, this room is going to change. It's difficult. What happens if we get two-thirds of that building up front? And the last three or four years, they decide they want to invest in it because it's a whole different... You get Callis people living in this town. That's a big deal, any way you look at it. You're going to do it in one year or two years, but what happens at the end of 15 years? When you've gotten who knows how many hundreds of thousands of residents in it and the next, you have to do it every year. What happens when the last five years aren't a financial... You're left with nothing?
I recognize this gentleman. Please state your name.
Alex Pelz. Everest great point. I like it to be a major investment down the road. On the upside, I also think about this as being a major investment in the town. It will attract people potentially here. You know, it could create more tax play fee for people that are here or want to... That's just common on that topic. Should I ask another question related to the earlier?
You may continue your remarks in two minutes.
To the point of the town of Callis.
I don't want to be in your office, but how come I didn't get an answer to my question? Oh, sorry.
We'll allow him to finish and if there's an answer to the question, we'll get to that. Yes.
Not really. Well, I have one more question about the Callis thing. So it sounds like they got offered to pay for it and it's... And it sounds like even if they had, it wouldn't be something for them to... I think the reasonable answer to that is there... These are people, I'm not sure what you call it, but whatever they pay off for your services, will that go up potentially because of this? And that, I sort of heard that answer a little bit and I think that's... Could reconcile that question a little bit, like they could tell me if they're paying for a certain chance of service.
Okay, I'm going to stay here. I'm sensing in this debate that there are questions, many questions, addressed to the fire department. So I will attempt after each remark, after each speech, to see if it's a question and then close it up here without objection. Okay. So in order, in order answering Mr. Galison's question first?
So I'll try to answer your question and...
Paul, okay.
You're right. We're not known who's going to be here in 15 years. I don't even know if I'm going to be here in 15 years. I can't tell you if I'm going to be here tomorrow. This is an investment in the community that is direly needed by the fire department. I was just on the slide board for the last three years. We have loans on other things. We're always at risk. If you disapprove a budget and you don't make a payment on something, it's just like anything else. So although they were approved by a vote which could commit future meetings if you say didn't approve the town budget, you're in the same boat. We're always at risk of that, so I can't predict that. That's the best I can do. I know that's an issue always because we have some truck payments. It's the same way. If they shoot our budget down, that's the way it is. That fairly good is the best I can do with that. I know. Yeah, I got it.
See, me, like, quite a rare... I don't disagree with your... What I'm getting at is how you plan to finance it and take care of it. Because there's no way after 10 years, if you invested that much, created a channel, if you invested that much in it, there's no way you're ever going to get any way to compensate, who knows?
We agree. It's just going to... It's a risk moving forward, but I believe it's an investment the town needs to make to keep the fire service efficient and solvent. And as far as dealing with Callis, we've always felt that it's a better approach moving forward to get the building built and then they always paid based on operating cost. Our approach would be to go after operating costs and this debt would become part of operating costs. So that's our anticipation. That's what we like to do. And then it's Woodbury's property that we don't have a whole bunch of people getting into the front end because talking to the Eastmont Fire Slideboard, it was a very bad experience and a very bad deal. They just said, "Don't do it." That was the information that we got. The approach we're taking is the approach that we felt was better. Our money would stay the same. No, I mean, I can't control any of those things. All I can do is put the need, like, do we need to buy a town truck? Or we need to buy something? We're always at a risk of that. We're just in the same boat. We're just in an unusual circumstance. I guess it's not that unusual for the state of Vermont. A lot of smaller fire departments are private nonprofit corporations. There's a number of Eastmont Fire, but there's a whole bunch of other towns doing like this. And I wasn't here when they did it, so I don't know why. I can't defend for that. Why is that way? But that's just the way it is.
I'm going to state here, some of the explanations from the fire department may exceed two minutes.
Sorry.
No, 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 but if there's an objection to that, please raise a point of order. Otherwise, I believe that in the interest of the meeting and information, it's important that they finish the explanation. So if there is objection, please raise a point of order. I recognize a gentleman here. Please state your name.
Mike McWhitt. And following up on Peter Pelz's statement, I think how a lot of us will make a determination on how we're voting on the article is based on the fact that everybody pays their own fair share. And it doesn't appear that Callis, at this point, is going to ask to pick up any part of this, that it all falls on Woodbury. And, but yet they are recipients of substantial amount of responses from this fire department. So I guess my question is, how does the people of Woodbury, small ethnic pillar, are picking up the whole town when Callis is not being asked to pick up a portion of that based on the handful of responses we make to Callis? And that's my question.
Okay, without objection, Chance will respond.
Sorry, I'll try to remember raising my hand.
No, I'm going to come back and forth if I sense a question.
I don't know how to answer that question, Mike, because I'm not sure how to tell people to swallow the pill. However, what we're saying is that Callis will be asked to put some of the bill down the road. We're asking the town of Woodbury to support the Woodbury Fire Department, the biggest building located in the town of Woodbury. We just gave the explanation, or called it, I'm going to rephrase that, that we would be looking to add this onto our operational costs, which they do pay 30% of. That's where we would see Callis putting their input into this. Every year when we build the operating cost, that's where that would come from.
Without objection, I'll come back to Mike. Mr. McWhitt?
My question is, down the road, if Callis decides it's not going to pick up the 30%, then we are totally committed to picking up the entire bill. Is that correct?
Yes. Because they're contracted. They're contracted, and they can back out anytime they want to. It would be extremely beneficial to them. They do receive small services. We have a lot of support in Callis. When they voted this year, we got almost 90% on our votes. We do get a lot of support. They see a lot of service from us. So I don't anticipate them ever backing out of their contract. It would cost them a lot of money to create their own fire department.
I see a hand raised in the back. This would be the second remark without objection. Alex Pelz?
I can add.
Okay. The next hand I saw raised was Mr. Shatney.
I have a question. The $1.3 million, where was that? When did you get that number?
Okay, I'll come to Chance.
That objection was redone. That, that O P C was redone in December of 2021.
So that, so that number, you're going to go there, it's going to double, so that has.
Well, it doesn't matter what the number comes to, because you're only approving 1.3 million dollars. We can't spend more than 1.3 million dollars. Now, we thought the same thing, Monty, to be honest with you, because we did the O P C last year for the vote, and it was 1.2. And we thought when we went back in for this next round, we were going to see substantial increases, having been over a year. And it was only a little over 100,000 more than what we saw at that time. I can't predict what the economy is going to do moving forward, um, but this is not an open-ended check. This is 1.3 million dollars, and that's what we have to build the station based on, on the O P C.
Without objection, um, Kuntumanti, unless you'd like to speak first? Okay, Kuntumanti, then.
Consider the, uh, so if this gets approved today, when would you be breaking ground? I mean, I know, and, and, and if you borrow a plan on this year, building supplies have doubled.
Okay, without objection, we'll answer the question, then come to the next speaker.
I'm going to answer. We have stopped trying to get permits, access permits, because they all have a lifespan. So what would happen this year is we would engage with the bank, get the finance, we've already started, but again, it's been stopped because we haven't had the approval to do anything. Uh, we would continue down that road. Now, we may in fact discover that it's not going to get, be able to begin construction till next spring, that's potentially possible. But we will have to live within the constraints of the budget that you all approved, that's just the way it is. We can't exceed the amount that's approved. Um, you know, we're all living into the same situation that you have to when you borrow money and trying to build something, you're paying $25 for a two-by-six. So it just, we'll have to live within those constraints, and based on what we get for, uh, just in the construction, we're, we're looking at, uh, uh, design build firm to do it, to save a lot of upfront costs for the town, it saves a lot of money. So we'll know once it goes out to bid whether they're going to be able to start this year, or we're going to have to wait till next year. And, and I know another question that was asked, I'll just answer. Uh, any money is going to be held that isn't spent, and only spent on either building this project or the debt service of this project, will not be spent on anything else. Does that help you?
I recognize this gentleman, please state your name.
Back to, uh, the $85,000 a year being voted out for the next 20. Now, will this be a separate item, or will this be in the budget for the town? No, no, it won't be in the budget for the town, sorry.
Nope. Without objection, take it away.
Sorry about that.
No, no.
I really am sorry. So your, the answer to your question, Chuck, is it will not be part of the town budget. It will be our budget, the fire department's budget. We will submit it yearly. What we're planning on doing is making it part of our operational budget, like I said before. So it wouldn't be a separate article that's left hanging out there. We're going to combine this all into our operational budget once the bond is approved, and we have that exact dollar amount. That will become part of our operational budget, so you'd see it in that.
Without objection, Paul will add a remark.
And just if people didn't understand our budgeting process with Callis, they pay a third of operating. So by placing it into operating, that's where our negotiations can start to deck. And y'all get to visit this every single year, so if we're not performing to what we said we would, we can be held accountable for this. So it's not like it's a free blank check for the next 20 years. If you don't like what you see happening next year, that conversation is having at the town meeting. We, of course, are going to do our best to perform as we've spoken.
Without objection, Chuck has.
Has anybody talked to the town of Callis about if you roll this in? So your, your operating budget is going to be getting towards town of Callis for the year. Has anybody talked to them about an increase like that?
We did have a lot of, we had one of the select board members, and a member in large from their community that were actually on the committee that helped us through the process of looking at the renovation plans. So they're fully aware of the cost, they're fully aware of what our plan is. Will they vote it up or down? I can't tell you that anymore than I can tell you if his body will have voted up or down. Historically, they always approved our.
I know they have, but it's pretty substantial.
I got you, yeah, I wish it cost less, but.
Yeah, I know it doesn't. They all have. That's not the point, I'm just hoping that somebody has gone to the trouble to make sure, well, as sure as it could possibly be, that they're going to be on board, and they're not going to just go back out and go and push their own tail to somebody like that.
We've done everything we could to this point.
There any, uh, yes, I recognize, Ms. Winkler.
I am sorry I didn't come to your home and house, but I, I'm sure you looked into this, but did you look into renovating, expanding the existing building?
Without objection, Chance or Paul?
So the answer is yes. The, the land we sit on is only eight feet on either side, so there's no room to expand there. Our problem is the building's too narrow and too short, so there's really no opportunity to renovate it. In this plan, if you remember in 2014, we approved a study, and our study said we need 7,000 square feet for our needs, and we've, we've been working off that. In 2014, we withdrew that article because it was too expensive and apparently was in the wrong location by what most people felt. The village study committee, I may over two minutes, but stop me. The village study committee happened after that, where we got people to say we wanted us to be in the village. So we were able to, to have this property that we have now donated to us. We're anticipating building around a 4,200 square foot building, which takes care of the needs of our big trucks. And we'll be reusing one of the two buildings to finish our space needs, which will be very adequate for us. It does the effect of keeping us in the village and keeping the cost down. So yes, we did look at all those options. Does that answer your question?
Uh, with, without objection, I recognize Peter again.
As a design build project, uh, the, when you, when it comes to be actually figured out, the 1.3 is locked in, but what you may want, you may not get because of the cost of the project at that time. That's the first question. The second question is the existing firehouse you will use also after this building is built?
Without objection, Paul?
So the answer to the, what was your first question, and I've already finished, it's not going to be second.
So the design build project.
Yeah.
You don't, you're going to, you're going to have to tailor that to your 1.3 million dollar budget.
Correct, we have to live within the reality, that's like everybody, you only got a certain amount of money. That may mean that some cost decisions have to be made, depending on how things go. Uh, we've had some good donations to get us to where we are. We had somebody donate the, the tearing down of the old building and the, the site work you've seen, so there's been some, some good investment. Um, I would say we're in the 200,000-ish category between real money and work and services that we've done so far, and we continue to do that. Um, and what was the second question? My brain is fogging.
Do you have something about the existing firehouse?
Well, we have to use one of the other two buildings in order to meet our space needs, and we feel that that is adequate, and we can do that, because we're only storing our trailers, our, so we wouldn't be building storage space over there, we wouldn't be building space for our trailer. We have space that's adequate for that, in one of those other two buildings. We're just not sure which one yet. I'm, I'm liking keeping the one that had water and sewer in it, but, you know, we'll make those decisions as we move forward. That's how we reduce the cost of this building. We didn't, like, that existing fire station on, on, on Main Street in 14 is about 1,700 square feet, so we didn't have to pay to rebuild that. That, that, you know, that's how we got where we got, and we feel we can manage that and keep the cost where it's somewhat reasonable.
I, so Chuck raises his hand first, without objection, will make another remark, and then I'll recognize the next.
So looking at this fire station that's standing here, the existing fire station now, looks like that needs a lot of work. So in two years, you're going to come back, and we're going to have to bring that fire station up to, to standards, new siding, new windows, and all that stuff.
Okay, without objection, Paul will answer.
Absolutely, yes, that needs some work. Um, our plan is, we've had a lot of people say we want to raise funds, we want some community involvement. Our idea for that building, if that's the one we end up keeping, is exactly that, that this would be done through work in time, donations, and townspeople stepping up to the plate. Because I've heard a lot of that input, why can't, why can't the townsfolk work on this? The answer is yes, they can. Building that big building is going to be tough, 16-foot walls and 40-foot trucks, not a good job. But this is a project where local people, when we get to do it, it probably wouldn't be until the other building was done, get to step up to the plate and say, "Hey, I'll go make some siding," or "I'll come and put siding on the building," or "I'll change a window for you." Because you're absolutely right, it needs some energy upgrade. So it would be done, that would be our plan, is to not try to borrow money for that and try to have it, because I wanted community invested in this. This is our town's fire department, and it's important to everybody. And I think people would step up to the plate to do that, because I've had a number of people say, "Yeah, we want to, we want to do something like that," and that would be their opportunity. Answer it? Yeah.
I recognize this gentleman, please state your name.
Norman, I just wanted to, uh, put forth a few comments. One, um, no, it is a big hit, of course, but, you know, the, the fire department now is doing somewhat more than they used to, and I think that, um, it's a question of, uh, you know, getting what you paid for, you know, for what it was. Just the fire department used to have, which was, did a great job, of course, and, um, I wonder if they do so much more, they have so much, so much more capabilities, they did some work for them, they really do need a station, and they have it totally inadequate. And, uh, you know, I support this. The, um, as to the Callis question, I remember way back when, Brady Hill and Kentane, and myself, and the Callis did arrange for that deal to do a lot of operating expenses, which has worked really well ever since. And it, uh, it was a fair deal, and it's, uh, based on the order that the fire department presented, and, um, it worked really nicely. I've spoken with some Callis people that are, uh, about this, that they feel that, yes, they have a responsibility to pay their fair share. They decided a long time ago, we'll not have their own fire department. They benefit from the great service that will accommodate these other employees. And, uh, as Chance mentioned, that they've got 90% of the vote, but it's, you know, who'd like to get 90% of it? So we have, I support it, it is a big hit, but we, we get what we paid for. And, and the reason it is what it is is because of all the volunteer work that's put into the, well, Woodbury and the town, so I appreciate that.
I recognize you, please state your name, stand.
So based on what you're saying about Callis, this projection of water cost handling really would be 30% less than what this figure is?
Yep. It would be about 33%, because they actually pay a third, not 30%, I missed the scope earlier. They pay a third of the operating cost. We put this out there for total transparency, I don't want Callis to back out in five years, and people go, "We didn't know it was going to cost us this much." So that's why that full amount is in there. We would like to think there's going to be some cost savings below that once we can move this into our operating cost. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I recognize Diana Peduzzi.
I have a fairly simple question. If you get started next spring, you think it'll be done in a year?
It's a six months.
Six months?
They told us four to six months construction time. I would try to avoid building in the winter for obvious reasons. Whether we get started and they stop and start, I don't know, we'll see where that goes.
Yes, I recognize this gentleman, Mr. Martin.
Robert Carson. I was wondering if you're looking at, are you changing the general contractor? Have you seen the whole sub project? Hire the seller?
No objection, Paul or Chance?
So it's, it's design build, which means you do the design as you construct it. Um, most forms of building now are through construction management. Essentially, they do the work of organizing and getting all the subs in. You understand, they, they, there's really no general contractor as much anymore, most everybody is what they call, um, construction management, they essentially just oversee all the work. So if you were to hire, like, an E F wall or something, that's essentially what they're doing. We obviously would have to oversee what they're doing, that would be our job.
Yes, without objection, Chuck has another remark.
If you get your vote and build that fire station in there, what will be the distance from the front of the fire station to the roof or feet?
Yes.
To the center?
To the edge.
Yes, I think it's 60 feet, the apron's going to be 55 feet. We've got the variance from the zoning order adjustment, right? I think it's seven, seven feet, the setback.
The setback is required for 75, we're at like 68.
68.
But we are further back than the original building was, so we're, we're less, we're less in violation of the order, and we went through the zoning order adjustment to get that, that approved.
You can look at the plan if you'd like.
Well, my point is, if those trucks that are, must be, those double ten trucks have to be 40 feet.
Yeah, we have enough apron, and we made sure of it. It's a lot nicer than what we currently have, because there's a lot of traffic and people that I'm really nervous about there. We'll be on our own, we'll be out of the, you know, there's a hill we got to cut down a little bit, the tires, and there's stuff that's got to be done, but we got to get a highway access permit, and just stop because it's perishable, I don't want to get it, and that's reality.
Didn't know what the footage was.
I think that the apron's 50 to 55 feet, with the truck, the longest truck is 30 feet.
Because it wouldn't be good to have.
No, we agree, no. We wouldn't have done it otherwise.
Ah, yes, I recognize this woman, please stand and state your. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, could you pause for a second? State your name. Okay, we have, we have a motion to call the question. Is, and the motion is made by, I'm, I'm sorry, the na, your name?
Rose Riley. Rose Riley?
Thank you.
Better know that voice pays off.
We have a motion to call the question, to cease debate and move directly to a vote. Is there a second?
I second the vote.
Okay. Suzie Graves, seconds. Okay. We have a motion and a second to call the question. And the question is, shall debate cease, and we move directly to a vote on Article 1? Two thir, two thirds, two thirds is required to pass this motion. There's no debate, no amendment. So we will conduct this vote by a showing of hands. Excuse me? No, okay, so I'll clarify. The vote we're conducting now in this motion is to cease debate and then move directly to a vote on Article 1. This is not a vote on Article 1. It's whether debate should cease and we move directly to a vote. Okay, so I'm going to ask the tellers, two tellers each, uh, from, from, including the town clerk, the Board of Civil Authority, justices of the peace, two on each side, and we will, we will count the, the vote, the raised hands. Okay? Two on each side, just to verify. It's a count of hands, okay. Okay. Those in favor of ceasing debate and moving directly to the vote on Article 1, please raise your hands.
Do we have to count?
Okay.
We got two thirds each.
It's, okay, it's, it's apparent to me, and I need to, I need to say, those opposed, please raise your hands. Okay. It's apparent that. It's apparent that the eyes have it, and the motion passes to call the question. So we will move now to a question, to a vote on Article One. I'll state the article and the question at hand. Shall the town appropriate up to $85,000 to the Woodbury Volunteer Fire Department, Inc., for the purpose of financing the cost for construction of a new fire and emergency operations center at a total cost of $1,300,000? If you, are there any questions about the effect of this vote? Yes, you have a.
Mr. Martin, Mike McQuillan, we request a paper ballot.
Okay, a paper ballot would be in order after a voice vote? Yep? No? Okay. Okay. Okay, I'm hearing a challenge to that ruling. I will, I will conduct, I will conduct a paper ballot.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, we have a question.
We need seven votes, so we should request, show my hand.
Yes, thank you. In order to conduct a paper ballot, we need seven requests. We have one. It's clear that we have more than seven requests for a paper ballot. So we will have the town clerk, Board of Civil Authority, and justices of the peace conduct the paper ballot. Okay. The town clerk, Robin, is going to report the results of the tally of the vote.
97 votes were cast, we needed 49 for adoption, 70 for the motion, 26 against one stale illegal vote, so the motion has passed.
Yep, it's my duty to state that, that, as Robin said, the motion has passed. Article One is adopted. We have, we just had a request for. We had a request for information to read, read the results. Okay, so I'm going to restate the results of the vote, the tally of the vote. The number of votes cast was 97. In order to pass the motion, we would need 49 for. The votes for the motion were 70. The votes against were 26. And there were, there was one deemed illegal vote, it was unintelligible. So, repeat, Article One is adopted. Okay, so there's, there's one more article, and that's the article to adjourn.
I make motion for adjourn.
Second.
We have, we have a motion made by Mr. Batjelman to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Is there any debate? Folks, folks, hold on, we're almost there. Hold on, let's get there together, we're almost there. We have a motion to adjourn, a second, there's no debate. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The eyes appear to have it. The eyes have it. This motion is adjourned. This meeting is adjourned.